Committee to order, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes, here.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes from June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, we have approval of the lot consolidation for case number twenty nineteen dash CDC dash oh two. Lot consolidation for one thirty-one to one thirty-three Center Street and one hundred and forty Florina Court. And Gosh is gonna have a presentation for us, so.
Thank you Chairman. So I wanted to start off, this is just a general location map. This petition is for, as mentioned, it's a lot consolidation to consolidate three residential lots into one lot of record. We have one lot on Florina Court, one forty Florina Court, and there are two lots on Center Street, and just for reference, we can see that it's just a little bit north of our city, um, City Hall. This is just a photograph of the site. Uh, we're actually sending on Center Street looking north. And just, just to kinda find the actual locations, we've got one forty Florina Court, which is a two-story residence. It is to remain, that's actually where the petitioner resigns, resides, I'm sorry. Uh, we've got one thirty-three Center Street, which is currently vacant, and then we've got one thirty-one Center Street, it's a one-story residence, frame residence, and the petitioners are proposing to demolish this, um, after the lot consolidation. And there's two existing curb cuts. Um, zoning map, uh, the lots are zoned R-two, which is for, um, large lot, um, residential. Um, as we can see, it's mainly surrounded by, um, residential properties. We've got majority is R-two zoning, uh, uh, similarly shaped lots, um, grid, uh, street system. Um, this is just once again, just to get a little bit of a, a bearing of the location, this is a photograph of Center Street looking northwest and northeast, just to get an idea of, of the conditions. This is an established residential streets. Majority houses have similar appearance, similar setback from Center Street. So as part of the lot consolidation, the, the petitioners are proposing a number of improvements, um, if the lot consolidation were to be approved. Um, as I mentioned, there would be the demolition of these, uh, single-story residents on Center Street, and we have a number of accessory structures, so I'll actually go through them. This is just a close-up of the, the site plan that's being proposed. We do have an existing patio, but the petitioners are proposing to enlarge the patio and add a pergola. We have a pool with a pool deck. There's a shed, um, shed slash pool equipment storage. Um, one thing that's actually come up, the proposed location is actually in an easement, so most likely that location will have to be changed unless we look specifically what the easement language says. Um, and we also have an existing, uh, playground that will be relocated, so it's already on site right now, which is will be moved south a little bit. Um, this is the south portion of the proposed, um, side plan. This is where the basketball court will go. We also have a solid six-foot privacy fence that will be installed. It will match the existing fencing that's around one forty, um, Florina Court right now. And we also have a rain garden as part of the, um, improvements. Uh, some, some type of stormwater management system needs to be installed on site, and the petitioners are proposing a rain garden. So first, we looked at the, uh, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, we do have, uh, the future land use map, and the particular lots are located in our single-family residential. Um, the main intent of this, uh, category is to maintain, uh, the established pattern of single-family development with similar home and lot sizes on a grid, grid street system. So, um, what we do have, the actual structure itself, the building will remain, and it's fairly similar to other homes on Florina Court. However, the lot size will be inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Also, in the comprehensive plan, we've got a number of goals that, as we've seen, um, staff found that the proposal is not consistent with these two of the goals. Um, it doesn't align with the future development pattern. The, the pattern calls for infill construction, larger homes on smaller lots and the grid street system. Um, it also doesn't enhance the curb appeal or improve the pedestrian comfort, especially on Center Street. It will create a double frontage lot, um, where the fenced-in backyard will be among other front, uh, front yards for the existing properties that are on Center Street. We also have a bit of a conflict because, um, the lot consolidation would create a rear yard among front yards. The required rear setback is thirty feet. The required front setback is twenty-five feet, so there's a little bit of a conflict there. Then moving into the compliance with UDO, um, the allowable uses, as we mentioned, this is zoned R-two, which is large lot, single family. The intent of the zoning district is to provide and maintain area for development of low-density, single-family residences on generally uniform lots. So as we see, it does meet the low-density, single-family residential, but it does not meet the uniform lots on a, uh, in a residential district. Um, continuing with the review of the UDO, we've got the development review procedures, and some of the main intents are to prevent poorly designed sites. We also wanna support improvements that promote safety and convenience for the public and preserve the value of surrounding properties. Uh, we also have the purpose and intent of the UDO, that's one of the sections at the beginning of the, the UDO, and it talks about protecting res- residential character and providing orderly development, enhancing aesthetic values, and providing remedy for low-grade subdivision of land. Um, we believe that creation of a through lot is not good planning practice because it could lead to some maintenance issues in the past, and also it will negatively, um, affect the surrounding residential neighborhood that's already established on Center Street. Um, we did have a public hearing, um, on June seventeenth. All of the notices were published in the newspaper, and notices were sent to the property owners within three hundred feet of the subject site. Um, some of the comments that were brought up during the public hearing included maintenance of the current site and also the future, um, property. Um, lot drainage came up, especially with the, the drainage, existing drainage easement that's, um, sort of in the middle of the lots, but also, um, how the drainage would be affected, um, on other properties on Center Street. What came up was also the, the fact that it, there would be about hundred and sixty-six feet of solid, uh, six-foot-high privacy fence along Center Street, and as we can see, it will not fit in within the established residential character on the, the properties there. Yes?
Alderman Messina?
Could you clarify the setback? I need to see if there was a difference between the setbacks.
That is correct. So the established properties that are on Center Street have a twenty-five-foot setback from the street.
Cut from.
However, the, the rear setback is thirty feet for the, for the, the two consolidated lots, actually three consolidated lots.
Thank you.
Um, one of the comments was also the noise because there will be a basketball court. Um, lighting has come up, although the original proposals did include lighting of the basketball court. The petitioners have decided to remove it, but we just wanted to bring it up because if, in case they ever wanted to bring it back in the future, it would have to meet the UDO requirements. Um, and just the fact that it's a through lot, we would have a backyard adjacent to the front yards of, as I mentioned, the already established properties on Center Street. Um, the CDC Commission voted to deny the lot consolidation for two zero. Um, staff is recommending denial, um, as I mentioned, because it's not consistent with the UDO, it's not consistent, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it actually meets the standards for denial of lot consolidation that are listed in the UDO. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
My, my question is, um, has the developer come back with all of it since the meeting that they had? Has he come back to us to try to work out those differences? Have they met with the building department and all that?
I have received an inquiry, um, where, um, they said they wanted to prevent additional evidence, but I never received anything. No.
So.
Continue.
So if we vote this down today, they would, if they wanna come back in to try revamp their plans and that, they would have to go all the way back to finding zoning, am I correct?
I believe so, but, uh, the, the intent, the petition in front of us is the lot consolidation. So, um, the, we presented what the petitioner is proposing to do with the site, because I think it actually, it shows us the entire story, but, um, we're not voting on the proposed improvements. The vote will be on the lot consolidation.
Continue.
And I totally understand that, but if he wants to reconsider his lot consolidation, he should be able to come back to us, but if we vote no today, he's got to start from the beginning again, am I correct?
That is correct. I think, yeah, the petition will have to move to City Council first and then CDC.
One question I have, and I, I think this is just a typo, but was this brought before the council in the past? Cause something says August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, that's just a...
I, I believe that was a typo. I apologize, I, I discovered it today.
Okay.
It's on the, on, in the memo, I think, yes.
I just wanted to make sure this isn't the second time it's come to council.
It is not.
Cause I don't recall this ever coming.
That was supposed to be the, the date of a public hearing.
That's fine. Any other questions? Okay.
Peter.
Alderman Messina?
Just a, just a comment, I guess. I think it speaks volumes, uh, about the growing appeal of our city. So I feel encouraged by this, right? But, uh, at the same time, we want to keep consistent with the standards we're setting. So this is awesome. I'm sure Oak Brook would love to have them. I just, yeah, there's a lot of concerns with this, but this is very encouraging to see where our city's evolving to. Uh, I know we see it on our North Irving, and, um, for those watching at home, I think it's something to look out for and something we need to start planning for, because the reality is people want to move to Wooddale, and they're not leaving, they want to expand. So kudos to them for that, but just not the right fit here. Thank you.
With that, uh... Oh, Jeff, did you have a question?
I, I just wanna say, this, this item's a little weird with the, the lot consolidation, so some of the, the wording...
Can you speak into the mic?
The wording of the lot consolidation, how we normally approve things, we make a motion in the affirmative, it's a little backwards this time, so that was per the, uh, city attorneys.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion, uh, based on the submitted petition and the testimony presented, the proposed lot consolidation does meet the standards for denial, and is not consistent with the UDO and comprehensive plan. And therefore, I move that the Community Development Commission adopt the findings of fact included within the staff memo as the findings of the Community Development Commission, and recommend it to the City Council, denial of case number twenty nineteen dash CDC dash oh two. That is my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
That passes. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, next, uh, items to be considered at future meetings, I would like to put something on for future meetings. Parking, uh, in the back, when your people are parking and they're actually on their, kind of patio instead of on the driveway. I know that's going on, and I was told that's allowed, cause we don't really have a code against that, so I'd like to bring that up for discussion. With that, any other items to be considered? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Bring that up, you might as well bring up the whole code about parking on the lawns, parking, permium on driveways, the whole, bring the whole.
Sure. I know we do have regulations that parking has to be on improved surfaces.
Right.
But then sometimes a patio could be considered, so that's why we may have to look into that closer, but I'll, I'll make a note of that.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. We're adjourned.
I'd like to call the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee to order. Um, let the records reflect the same, Alderman, at councils, the same as prior. Um, and I would like, uh, an approval of the minutes of the meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. Uh, we have a report and recommendation, uh, we're gonna turn it over to, uh, the chief. So chief, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight coming to you looking for the approval to replace three squad cars, squad four oh two, four oh six, and four oh seven. Uh, just some background on this, these are two thousand and fourteen Ford utility interceptors. Uh, on the second page of the memo, you'll see the scoring that's done by the garage. Uh, if you remember, this is a practice that was put into place in the last three to five years to score the vehicles and not just replace them because of they've reached three years or whatever age, uh, age they've, they've, they've reached. Uh, so council by doing that, uh, you know, we've really gotten to the point that we're fiscally disciplined in extending the life of the vehicles. So these vehicles normally would've been replaced at three years. Uh, these are actually gonna be five-year vehicles. Uh, we've kinda gotten to the point that many of our squad cars, due to both the reliability of it and the new scoring system, uh, probably a combination, is we're stretching them out to about four to five years. Uh, you know, next year, there might be one that comes through that's only three years old for whatever reason, but, uh, generally, I'm starting to see it extend out to a four-year process also since we went to the Ford utility interceptors. Um, so what we're looking to do is replace three of them. Uh, the, uh, price, uh, with all the options is thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars for each through Curry Motors, and that is a competitive bid through the Northwest Municipal Conference. Uh, the total cost would be one hundred and six thousand dollars and, uh, one hundred and six, uh, thousand and twenty-six dollars. And, uh, if council approves that, we'll bring back that to full council next week and then order the vehicles.
Alderman Jacob?
This, we're replacing with the same type of vehicle, correct?
That's correct, and so almost all of our equipment will transfer over from one car to the other. Uh, there will be additional setup costs, you have to pay a company to, to transfer those over, but we don't have to buy new light bars, we don't have to buy the backseat partitions, uh, the, you know, the back, uh, prisoner seats, all that stuff will be just transferred on over.
Follow up, Alderman Jacob?
I, I remember talking to you about this before, and I, I thought you had said that they're doing away with that truck, or it's not gonna be exactly the same?
So they, uh, late, middle to last year, they're coming, this is a new version of it, but, but most of the main stuff is all gonna still fit. Um, they are coming out with a hybrid version too, uh, that next year we might be looking to go, but we did talk to the garage in this case, and they didn't recommend, since it's the first model year of, uh, offering the hybrid in the police vehicle, they recommended at least one year before we consider, uh, to see what other agencies are experiencing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Messina?
I'd imagine the existing cars that we sold at auction.
Chief?
Correct. Uh, we, we generally sell most of them at auction. Uh, we have, uh, transferred one through in the past to be the car that just goes to Fenton High School, so there's a squad car presence there. Uh, so we work with the garage each time. A couple of these are really high-mileage vehicles that they for sure will go to auction. Uh, the one that, uh, maybe, there's always a possibility of, if, if there was a need within the city for it, it could be transferred to something else, but, uh, most of them are going to auction, and through that public surplus, they're getting a really, uh, nice return on the, on the, on the cost, uh, from the auction. Uh, they're in high demand, a lot of people wanna buy them through the surplus auctions.
Follow up?
Do those monies go back to our general fund then?
No.
That's correct, they go to the general fund, and then the general fund, uh, funds the SURF, which is the, the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Thanks.
Alderman Wesley?
I'll make a motion to approve a hundred and six thousand, twenty-six...
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Pardon me?
It's money.
Roll call? Okay, roll call. All right, language, do a roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that still passes. Wanna go to the next one, chief?
Sure. Uh, the next thing before you tonight is a resolution to approve a, a refreshed intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and Fenton District one hundred. Uh, as a little bit of background, we've been, uh, the school liaison officers since nineteen ninety-nine in Fenton High School, uh, back when Bensonville was unable to staff it at that point. Uh, it was done for a half of year at that point, cause it happened in the middle of the year. Um, and then from that summer on, in the summer of two thousand, we've had an intergovernmental agreement that's been rolling year to year by the terms of the agreement, uh, with each agent, with each, uh, group that wanting to continue it or choosing to not terminate the agreement. So we've been, uh, we're in regular contact with Fenton, obviously. Uh, they still desire to have us over there, uh, but knowing that this agreement was reaching twenty years, it was time to just take a fresh look at it and make sure nothing legally needed to be cleaned up. Uh, really, the only changes from the old agreement to the new agreement are kinda the reporting requirements from us to them for types of calls we were on were much more strict than actually they want. Uh, so we went to a language that says a reporting system that's mutually agreeable to us in the school district, and then, uh, there was a couple changes to, uh, indemnification language, which is common now with any of these IGAs to indemnify each other from any, uh, claims as, as a law by law. So both legal teams have looked at it, and, uh, you know, it is, uh, also as a reminder, what we do is we give Fenton a budget ahead of each year estimating our costs, and then at the end of the year, uh, the city sends them a bill for all of our actual costs to include all of the officers' overtime, uh, and FICA, uh, life insurance, uh, health insurance, and all those benefits that, that are paid out throughout the year.
Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Uh, two questions. One, you might've answered, you had mentioned that, uh, it's, it's in need of refreshing, so those changes you talked about, were those what you meant by refreshing? I didn't know what other, other change would be.
That's correct, those are the only two changes that were made, um, but the reason we got together to discuss it even was because it's been around for a long time, and just to make sure nothing in the Illinois state statutes or the school reporting requirements or anything else had changed that we had to update.
Alderman Jacob?
Second question, in one C, it talks about prosecution of local ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
So since the Fenton High School is actually in Bensonville, are there any conflicting local ordinances between Bensonville and Wooddale that would cause us a problem?
Chief?
No, we haven't encountered any, and, and kinda how we handle that is because of concurrent jurisdiction over there, you know, on our border, uh, we handle all the arrests for ordinance arrests and also misdemeanor arrests. Any felonies, uh, we do involve Bensonville, uh, because, uh, you know, we have to take, take that to a little bit different level, but, uh, it's worked out very well. Bensonville PD has always been willing to come over whenever we have something that does rise to a felony, but most of the issues are, uh, local ordinance violations or possibly state violations, but mainly local ordinance violations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Give me the motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Second.
Any other questions? Should we do a roll, or will an aye work?
Aye works.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, we're gonna carry on and move it down the road here for the next couple. Thank you, sir, you're in charge.
Evening, thank you. Uh, first, one of two amendments to our city ordinances that we're proposing. Uh, number one is the amendment to section four, three oh six, which is our cigarette and tobacco dealer ordinance. As most of you know, on July first, uh, this year, the State of Illinois, uh, passed an amendment to the age of possession or sale of tobaccos to minors from eighteen to twenty-one. Uh, so what we're asking is simply a, a change in our language for our city ordinance, uh, stating the same, eighteen to twenty-one, and, uh, we can continue our enforcement efforts, uh, along with the State of Illinois throughout the, the next year.
Was that a hand up for a question?
Well, it's asked, asked to pass it.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next. What? Pardon me?
There's a comment.
Who's, oh, comment?
It's after.
Go ahead.
So, chief, I take it we're gonna notify all of our business establishments? I know that, they know it's coming, but I wanna make sure they, they don't play, oh, we didn't know.
Yes, we, uh, we've been in touch with the State of Illinois, and we're waiting for a packet to do some social media release. I have talked to several of businesses who are already been made aware of it by their, not only their dealers, but the State of Illinois. Uh, and this will also be in line with our, uh, tobacco enforcement grants, uh, that we receive through the State of Illinois, in which we do, uh, three checks a year, uh, using underage kids trying to buy tobacco products.
Anything further? Okay, that passed. Chief, next one.
Uh, the next one is an ordinance amendment, uh, to add to our chapter fourteen, uh, with City of Wooddale local ordinance. Uh, we're asking, uh, that you approve the addition of two statutes, uh, to mirror the state statute of theft and criminal damage to property. Uh, the reason behind this is, uh, a lot of our prosecutions these days, and, and what you read in the papers, is the state courts are getting overburdened. Uh, there's also the reason of, uh, in certain cases, monetarily, it might not rise to the level of a state charge. Uh, it gives us an option as the police officers on the street to charge a little bit lesser of a, an offense, which only holds a monetary, uh, fine involved. Uh, so those are the two additions to the chapter. Uh, it mirrors exactly what the state statute says, and just gives us a little bit more, uh, legroom to work with.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Uh, any items to be considered at future meetings? Alderman Messina?
I don't know if this is the form, but, um, we talked about expanding potential committees at some point. Um, is that something we can, can we put that on as a future address? Okay.
That's a committee.
Can I strike that off the future?
Alrighty then. Uh, how about this next one, item F? Anybody in favor of F?
To move.
Second, favor? Aye? That passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Great job.
I'll call the Public Works Committee to order. Let the minute taker note that the same people are present. I need approval of the minutes.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, our item today is a full ordinance update. Am I right? Is that what we're doing first?
Correct, yes, and we have two representatives from Robinson Engineering, who are gonna take the lead on this one, so I'll hand it over to Aaron and Dana.
Okay, I'll, why they moving up? I will, I will tell you that, uh, I did read it, it was very minor changes, so I will have her, do her, real, very boring literature trail. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Wesley.
It, it was not.
Well, why don't you give the presentation since you read it?
Go ahead. She came all the way from Springfield, so I'll let her do it.
You're on the air.
Well, thank you for having us here to talk about stormwater and flood plain ordinances. Uh, we're proposing amendments to two chapters within your UDO. Uh, basically, we're here as a formality, this is something that we have to do, all the communities in DuPage County have updated maps and flood insurance studies from FEMA, so we are required to go through this, uh, motion right now to put the new dates and the panel numbers within your ordinance. Um, as part of this task, we also are updating the city's ordinance to match the county's ordinance, so as you probably know, we're required to enforce DuPage County requirements as well. And so we went through a comprehensive review of your code next to the county code. We went through review with the IDNR, who is the state agency reviewing on behalf of FEMA, uh, to make sure that we're meeting all of the federal requirements to remain eligible within the National Flood Insurance Program. So I know this was some riveting reading within your packets. Um, I'm not gonna go into any details, I know a lot of it is technical in nature, but I know a lot of it is technical in nature, but I would be happy to answer any questions if anyone should have any.
I, I have no questions. Does anyone else? So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Second item. The street study, award a contract to BMW for our street study for $29,810.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? No questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, approve the contract between the city of Wood Dale and John Neary Construction. It's a high waft sewer repair project, not to exceed the amount of $23,800. You, you want to give us a little background on this? Why this is?
Absolutely. So the goal of the city is to get out and televise and find problems before, you know, we actually get collapses and that. So this was identified recently. We found about a 40-foot section that's in bad shape, so we're looking to replace that pond further inspection. We found that it's transite pipe. It, it contains asbestos. So we would need a licensed asbestos mitigation contractor to remove the 40-foot section that a normal contractor like Neary Construction could then put in and make the repairs. To minimize costs, we're looking to use our staff for bypass pumping. MWRD's agreed to loan us the hose as long as we clean it out. Alan's group is going to help us. It goes through a driveway and a lawn. We've talked to the resident and she's in agreement to us to do this and Alan's going to help us out with doing the restoration in the house or with our, with his resources.
So. Go ahead. Go ahead. Randy?
Yeah. I didn't catch it in the notes. Maybe I missed it, but what's that? I know it was a stretch of 40 feet, but what were the effective dresses?
378 is the house that it's right in front of. I, I'm not sure the number right next to it would be a similar number.
378 deep?
Sorry.
Lake Minnehaha? Right by the lake?
Uh, there's like a little cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that's that last house next to, next to Lake Minnehaha, pretty much.
Yes.
So that's the, that's the house that's.
That's the house that's right in front where we're going to tear up the driveway. Then there'll be some other lawn work that's, you know, we have to restore.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm, I know, I think I know the answer, but we will restore it back. That driveway, I think, is concrete. We had a similar issue prior where it was asphalt and the homeowner was not thrilled because our asphalt did not match the existing asphalt they had. So we'll do our due diligence to work with the resident and we, and communicate when we're going to do that, that work.
Absolutely, yes. We're going to take out a whole section of the sidewalk at the, I'm sorry, the driveway at the joints, so it'll be less noticeable.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, you're never going to match.
My only question is, this is, is this all on city easement or is part on private property?
We're on easement, but the easement is on their property.
Okay.
So where we lay our sewer, we have an easement to it, but it, it runs through their lawn and driveway.
Okay. And did we, we need a, some kind of authorization from them to sign off on to do this or no?
As a courtesy, we have talked to her and we also talked to the neighbor. But I mean, on our easement, we have the ability to do this in a, you know, especially a public health and safety measure, but we have talked to two of the residents, so, and they support this because they don't want the sewer collapsing.
Yeah, of course. Okay, thank you.
Shows my negativity on this topic, but there is the lake that's there. Could, could that ever impact, if there was anything going on with that pond itself, impact anything going on with the sewer lines running underneath there?
Well, we have, the section that we're at, you know, the, the pond is back a little, so we're, you know, we're, we will bypass pump and, and keep control though, you know, the, you know, make sure we keep the sewer in good shape and, you know.
We, we would know though, if anything was seeping from that pond, I mean, again, this may be impossible, but underneath, if anything was happening under, under the ground, under the road, would we have visibility to that to see if it was impacting maybe the collapse of a sewer line?
Yes, so we have TV'd it and we didn't see any signs of I and I in the, the footage that we have. We have some television of that section and we didn't see any indication of that.
Okay, thanks.
Mike Sizmarski?
Just going back to what Alderman Messina said, I, just so they know, it won't have to be 100% matched. It doesn't work. Concrete varies, but.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's going to be as close as possible, so.
So I, you know what? I am going, I'm going to propose that, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve this, but I also would like them to go back and look at the price to replace that whole entire line. Okay? Down the line. Give, give us a ballpark, figure what it's going to cost.
He cameraed it, so he didn't need it, did he?
I'm sorry.
What?
I'm sorry.
You cameraed it already, didn't you?
I, I understand it, but it's asbestos pipe. We want to remove it. Go ahead. Mayor?
Right. Just so people listening and getting nervous, it's not asbestos pipe. It's transite pipe, right? They use asbestos in it. The line is fine, but we've, my understanding was we only had these lines over on the west side of town, but this is going to be, should become a strategic planning item because if we, if, so how many of these pipes? How old are they and what's the shelf life on these things? So if this thing's over 60 years old and we're starting to get collapsing, so right now it's 23,000, next month it's another 23,000. Maybe this is, you're taking out 40 feet, maybe there's only 200 feet here, but there's also parkway restoration, driveways. I mean, that adds to the cost, but we should start looking at some type of plan. When, when these lines come up, we need to get rid of them once and for all. You got that? Yeah, I saw you typing. That's why I mentioned it. Another thing that Mr. Gurelli said, the IEP, they, we need a permit, right? So if we pass this tonight, we want to make sure we give the staff direction, Mr. Murmice, so they can start getting, it takes 10 days so they can start a, you know.
Permit process.
Permit process. So by the time it comes to us next week, it's already seven days. If we're going to approve it here tonight, I would imagine we're going to approve it next week, so we can move this process along and get that taken care of.
Mr. Jacob?
I think the only other clarification for residents watching that this is sewer pipes. This is not water pipes. This is for the sewer.
So that was my motion. Do I have a second motion?
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call on this, not to exceed $23,800. So do a roll call on that.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Okay. Who's handling the next one? My computer crashed, so. Final project cost for the contractor?
No, no, no.
I did number four.
I missed one.
Yep, we're above it.
Oh yeah. The drainage, rear yard. Rear yard drainage, the changes. Who's taking that one? Nonprofit. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So as you all know, we offer a rear yard drainage assistance program to help mitigate flooding on private property. As requested by the committee, we have reviewed and revised that program. Some key revisions are, we've clarified the procedural steps to help expedite the process as well as limiting unnecessary duplication of duties. We've clarified the reimbursement limits are on a per-project basis and not per-resident. We've removed the ineligible ability of rental properties and we've extended the program to non-for-profit organizations so long as they meet the same criteria as the homeowners and the reimbursement limits will apply the same between nonprofits and private homeowners.
Mr. Jacob?
When you say not-for-profits, is this for churches and not-for-profit businesses as well or?
Correct. Any non-for-profit entity within the city limits.
Okay, because I thought this was a residential. So now it's going to be for commercial properties as well?
Not necessarily.
Residential.
Go ahead.
Not necessarily commercial, but not-for-profit organizations.
Like churches, schools.
Exactly.
Historical societies.
Historical societies.
Not businesses. Nonprofit that they don't get.
Okay. I mean, is that in there somewhere that it's not a business? Okay.
Yes.
You don't know for profit.
Randy, you have a question?
I said a comment. I know we've kept you guys very busy on that program. It was a learning experience for, for much of it and I'm grateful we've cleared it up. At first I was scared we got ourselves in so deep that it caused us to tunnel extra work, but it just proves the commitment to actually help residents where we can and where it makes sense and I'm glad that we're just refining the program. So thanks for your hard work in getting this off. That's a motion. I'd like to give you commendation.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next one will be. Our favorite topic if anyone reads this. H.R. Green's here to, as you know, the state is asking for some of the money back from the tollway. So I will let you have a floor for a couple of minutes here to explain it a little better.
I will try to keep the six-year, six-year history of the Elgin-O'Hare Project very brief. This is the, there's two actions being requested this evening. This is the final costs for the final tollway project that affects the city of Wood Dale. As part of that, as, as you recall, the city received land acquisition credits from the tollway for various portions of right-of-way. That's been used as kind of a bank account to pay off the very, offset the costs of the various project enhancements, whether they're landscaping enhancements, bridge enhancements, bike paths, upgraded fences and such along the corridor. This is the last project cost that has been finalized. So the, the first action this evening is to agree to the final cost for that project. They did come in under budget on that, just a shorter length of fence that went in on the project. And then the second action is what to do with the resolution of the remaining land acquisition credits. So would it be appropriate to address the first item?
Sure.
Agreement on the final cost first?
Sure.
So.
Go ahead.
Do that by motion or?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion. The pay? No, go ahead.
Because they're two separate actions. First, I'd kind of like to get concurrence on the final cost of the final project, which is about a 20,000, $19,000.
Final project.
Cost or aesthetic enhancements. Then after that, I'd like to discuss what to do with the remaining land acquisition credits.
Okay.
So first one is just agreeing to the final cost, which we, we concur with the numbers and we recommend approval on that, that portion.
So just, so we're a little more formal on the agenda. I think it's approval of final, approval of final project cost for contract, I dash 14, 4638, correct, Scott?
Correct.
That would be the motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
For approval of final project cost for contract, I dash 14 dash 4638.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And what was the dollar amount again?
$18,000.
Okay. So the motion, second. I need a roll call vote on that, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes. Okay. The other item forward?
Thank you.
I don't really want to discuss this, but go ahead.
Now that the final costs on all the items have been concurred with by the, by the city, this spreadsheet is attached in the agenda. This summarizes all of the credits for the entire project by the tollway and all of the costs for all of the various projects, including the one just approved. Once all of those credits have been approved, which they have, there's a remaining balance There's three potential actions that, that the city could look at. The tollway has requested the city to donate those to the tollway as an in-kind towards the project. The city could agree to do that. They could agree not to and request payment of those fees or some combination in between.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to have a cut us a check for 344.
$344,000 and $116.43.
Yes.
I would second that motion.
Randy?
I like where you're going with this, but I'd actually, see if we could set aside not a big amount of money, but some type of highway memorial for maybe fallen officers or maybe some, something good.
We may discuss it.
Can we take, well, right, can we, can we allocate some of those funds for something?
Can we get the check first? We want to get the check before.
Before they make it a mandatory donation.
Just so we're clear, so then I think what Scott or Mr. Mark Horton is looking for
is just direction to give back to the tollway, correct? Like, can we normally do it?
Correct. Yeah, this one, however, with this action, if the city direction is to, in many cases, just final agreement on project cost, a simple email from myself has sufficed. In this case, if the city is looking towards seeking the tollway to write a check for those remaining balances to the city, I would suggest that the response back to the tollway come on city letterhead.
Jeff, you have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Aye. All roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?